Good evening and welcome to the Trotwood Madison Thursday, November 6th, 2025 work session. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Mrs. Adams, would you call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, next on our agenda is our mission statement that will be read by Vice President Simmons.
The mission of Trotwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by an innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Next is to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes?
No, there are no changes this evening.
There are no changes, so I need a motion to adopt the agenda as present.
No motion.
No second.
It's been moved to second. Mrs. Adams, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Next, number two on our agenda is the consent agenda. A is the approval of a September 4th, 2025 work session meeting minutes and September 18th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Are there any questions? Then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
No motion.
No second.
It's been moved to second. Mrs. Adams, would you call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes for the consent agenda. Item number three, board report.
Okay. On behalf of the Policy Committee, I'm here this evening to present the first reading of the Fall 2025 Policy Update, denoted Policy 44 dot one. If you make reference to your attachment on the, on the agenda online or in your folder, you will see first the Fall Policy Summary Update. The summary update outlines all of the dedicated policies that have been revised or that are new or that are being pulled from, from our current policy. As you can see, if you do have an opportunity to pull it up, there are several policies with some additional revisions, starting with 2226, moving through 9270. Just for note, there are a couple of, a couple of different policies that, that stand out. 2430 all kind of aligns to some of the things going on with House Bill 96 with regards to interscholastic athletics and home-educated students. Policy 3130 declares the, the ability of the school district to provide, excuse me, provide some seniority, that seniority and continuing contract status cannot be primary factors in making assignment decisions with staff members. Policy 5130 withdrawal for students, from school gives some new information and outlines for students that are under the age, under the age of 18 with, that are withdrawing from school. 5136 updating the cell phone policy and just adding some additional revisions. Also 5200, some additional revision, revisions to the attendance policy per House Bill 96. Policy 5223, release time for religious instruction. This talks to some of the revisions with regard, regards to students getting at least one period of, one period per week for release time and when that, that can take place. 6109, allowing districts and ESCs to utilize credit card payments as acceptable modes of paying outside balances and fees. There were some districts that only accepted cash or checks still. Policy 6830 talks about some provisions of district audits. Policy 8400 talks about the implementation of suicide and crisis lifeline information and how that information can or cannot be shared. And that's, that's really it outside of just some other, some other revisions to those policies. So, all of these policies tonight are identified in the 441 update and this is the first reading. There are two readings of the policy, so this will be on the, be on the agenda for next, for, for the next board meeting and then the board will have the opportunity to just vote to approve these updated policies. All right.
All right. Thank you for that. Next is the Treasurer's Report.
Yes. In your folders tonight, you have the October 2nd work session meeting minutes and the October 16th regular meeting minutes. Those are for your review tonight and I'll be asking for approval of those at our business meeting later this month. And that is all that I have for you tonight.
Okay. All right. Agenda number five, Superintendent's Report.
I do have a few items this evening for, for information and as always, one for approval this evening. The first item for information this evening is a request from the Trotwood Madison High School Singers Group for an, for approval for an out-of-state field trip to Memphis, Tennessee, January 16th through the 20th, 2026. If you make reference to the attachment, you will see the letter from Ms. Murdock requesting the approval, excuse me, requesting approval for the trip. The trip will be open to singers in grades nine through 12 and supervised by Mr. Delany Stokes. Students will travel by school bus. Students will perform a variety, a varied repertoire of prepared and improvised music representing a variety of cultures at the One Voice Acapella Invitational. When they return, students will review their performance to identify strengths and weaknesses upon which to build and improve. I don't think that's a school bus. I think it'll be a charter bus. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. 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 That's gonna be a charter bus. Yeah, we're not taking a school bus to Memphis. Yeah, we'll make sure we get that clear.
Okay.
Item B for information this evening is request for an out-of-state field trip to Washington, DC for our eighth grade students. For many years, our eighth grade students had a annual field trip to Washington, DC. The last time they took the trip was the year before COVID. COVID, they did start the fundraising and the planning for the trip, the COVID year, but it was canceled. So, we are in the works of getting that going, in that going again. And I think they went last, no, they didn't go last year. They didn't go last year. This, this will be the first year of them starting again. So, with this, the Washington, DC trip is scheduled for the 12th through the 15th of May. Trip will be open to all eighth grade students with four teachers and one administrator. Students will travel by charter bus. Funding for the trip will be attained through organized fundraising activities and self-funded by participants. While in Washington, DC, students will visit the Smithsonian, the Capitol, and various national monuments. They will also tour Howard University. When they return, students will prepare and present presentation on their experiences to incoming eighth graders. And that, again, that trip will be a trip that is self-funded. We don't have the actual cost yet. Always goes by the number of kids that they have that are attending the trip. I think right now the going rate is right between six to maybe $700 or so. So, that is for information. The next two items for information are two items from the Operations Department. The first is request for approval for the Quarterly HVAC Plan Maintenance Service Agreement through MSD. MSD is Mechanical Systems of Dayton and on a yearly basis, we work with a company to provide preventative, preventative maintenance to our HVAC systems in all of our buildings. They provide all of the services that are bulleted along with additional services that are identified for the yearly plan maintenance with 24/7 priority service. This is, contract will be a three-year term. This is a renewal contract. We did solicit quotes for, from different vendors as we do with regards to these service contracts and MSD again came in with the lowest, lowest quote. It wasn't actually a bid, it was a quote. That is the quarterly price, $32,630. It will be paid quarter, well, the yearly, excuse me, and the quarterly will be paid at $8,157.50. This contract is paid through our O-34 Maintenance Fund, which is money that is designated for maintenance and upkeep of our school buildings. The, the maintenance fund, the O-34 money was approved upon the building of the, of the new buildings. So, this is money that is generated directly for, for the, the maintenance of the buildings. So, I'm asking for, I will be asking for approval of that contract next board meeting. It is for information this evening. The next contract is the Quarterly Plan Maintenance for the Automated Systems, also from, this contract is also from the Operations Department. With all of this HVAC equipment, cooling equipment, boilers, you have to continually update your automated systems, just like in your home. When you have your Nest thermometer, we have, excuse me, thermostat, we have thermostats, thermometers, heat gauges, temperature sensors, all throughout the district through all of this equipment. And along with the HVAC Preventive Maintenance Agreement, we have to manage the controls for, for those units. So, this contract is also, also outlines what the, what the responsibilities of Mechanical Systems of Dayton, of Dayton will do with regards to the upkeep of the, of the HVAC controls and the annual sum of $34.5 with a quarterly of $8,625. And this also will be taken, this also, excuse me, will be funds that will be taken from the O-34 account as well, the maintenance fund. And then the last item I bring to you this evening is Personnel Agenda E. Shared this with you guys last week. I am asking for information on this agenda item this evening. As you can see, we are still employing substitute teachers. All substitute teachers are used on an as needed basis. We have some additional period professionals, after, after-school food service workers with the, with the caveat and understanding that our after-school program and our food service program is a self-funded program and it's reimbursable. So, although it doesn't always, you know, break even, we still provide a lot of the, the funding for staffing and support through food service through the self-funded program. And then you also have some appointments of some additional, additional supplemental contracts. After your review. Yes. After your review, I am asking for action this evening. Yes.
So Superintendent Howard has already sent the Personnel Agenda. So hopefully you have an opportunity to review it. Do you have any questions? If no questions, I need a motion.
No motion.
It's been moved to second. Mrs. Adams, would you call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Motion passes for the Personnel Agenda. Item number six, discussion items and updates.
All right. I do have some discussion items that were forwarded to me and then one I did add this evening and then Mrs. Adams has an item that she's going to be sharing. The first is House Bill and Senate Updates. If you open your Vanilla folder and pull out item A, the documented, document denoted item A, this is a summary from Shannon down at the ESC, Superintendent Cox down at the ESC, along with a packet of current House Bills that are either in committee or still in the, the creation stage. And what I've done is just kind of put a packet together for your review. As I always state, if you have some, some late night time and you can spend some time reading, you will see a summary of a lot of the, a lot of the House Bills or Senate Bills that are currently in the, in the legislature that have direct effect on students. The first page, A, gives you just a summary of where House Bill 129, 309, 186, and 335 are. These are all House Bills that are directly related to property tax. What this document shares is that, and if you look at that last paragraph, BASSA, which is the Buckeye Association of Superintendent's, Buck, Buckeye Association of School, what is BASSA? School Administrators, thank you, I'm sorry. Emphasize that these four bills likely represent the final round of property tax reform for the foreseeable future. While none of them are perfect, they have significantly improved due to the work and advocacy of superintendents across Ohio. So, each one of these four bills, there's a summary with regards to some of the revisions and changes to the property taxes and also where districts can expect, you know, millage points and, and, and fun, not even, not fundraising, but taxes in general to, to stop or where those caps are. So, if you take a few minutes to read, read through those, those are the summaries of those four property tax levies that we need to, we need to definitely pay close attention to because you guys will be receiving a little, little bit of information here this evening that, that will be very relative to, to levy information and the millage cap specifically. And then as you move through the next couple of pages, I have identified, the first one would be House Bill 455. House, House Bill 455 is in its second week of hearing in the House Education Committee. Handful of statewide educational organizations were invited to testify as they are working to revise the Report Card for College Career Workforce and Military Readiness. Revising this component and us getting a very, a better gauge and understanding of how this, how this works and how what we input affects this Report Card indicator is kind of all in the process of works right now. And kudos to Ms. Murdock and, and her team and the high school principal and counselors. They have really been digging down in the details of what that means for us and how we can work to ensure that our kids are getting these college and career readiness pathways or, or seals or, you know, you know, whatever these requirements are. So, that is just a denote on, on 455. The next one I have is 485. This one is in hearing. It is a bill that requires schools to include a, include education on human growth and development in grades three to 12, three through 12. It would require that students view a specific video depicting the stages of human development beginning in the womb. The invited bill is sponsored and testimony will be included along with video. So, as you can see, regardless of your, your ideology, there is an infusion of, of different ideologies going on. Now again, some of these are, the majority of these are in hearings. They're in hearing and they're in discussion, but there are some bills that have, that have been presented to the legislature. Next, on the next page, just a brief summary of the NIL court briefing that everybody, I'm sure you're familiar with. The Ohio High School Athletic Association is set to hold an emergency referendum after Franklin County Common Police Court Judge this weekend issued a temporary restraining order blocking it from enforcing its rule barring high school athletes, athletes from profiting off their name, image, and likeness. So, this summary was sent last, two weeks ago, the 31st. So, what that means is that high school students, amateurs can now benefit off their NIL, their name, image, and likeness. And the Ohio High School Athletic Association is scheduled to vote, I think in the next few weeks, on, on whether or not they will actually put a, a policy in place allowing name, image, and likeness. Moving forward, I got a couple pages down. Senate Bill, Senate Bill 19. Senate Bill 19 is a, a bill that was introduced and is currently in the, in, still in committee hearing stages, discusses academic intervention. And what this bill is presenting is that with regards to academic intervention services at public schools and the establishment of mathematics improvement and intervention plans. So, currently we have reading improvement in intervention plans that we are legally obligated to work with kids that have been identified as, as struggling readers. And there are a lot of parameters that go with these plans and Ms. Murdock could probably give a soliloquy about what these, these reading intervention plans require us to do. Now, the legislature is trying to force us to create these math intervention plans instead of, instead of allowing us to work diligently with our kids and our staff to try to support them in areas that have been identified as gaps. They're trying to put some additional plans in place that we have to be legally obligated to, to implement without additional funding for, for staffing. The next one is, I would call your attention to a few pages down. And again, if you don't have the pages, that's okay, I can just read them off to you. This one will be Senate Bill 107, which speaks to, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go back to, I'm gonna go to Senate Bill 420, which speaks to additional property tax information. These are some additional Senate Bills that are now in committee hearings that give more parameters around different types of property taxes. Specifically 420 disallow and by, to disallow and by 2030 eliminate property taxes levied for a continuing period and time to name this act, the Taxpayers Freedom Trilogy. So, this is one of the provisions that is trying to get some, some thunder behind it where there's a group of citizens along with one of the senators that is trying to move forward to eliminating property taxes, which have, will have some huge ramifications on school districts, on local municipalities, et cetera. But of course, that is just currently in, in discussion, but you can read about 420, 421, 422, 444, and 445. Next, 486. This is another bill that has been introduced and if you look at the, the names in parentheses, those are the individuals that are working to present the bills. 486 to enact the Charlie Kirk American Heritage Act to permit teachers in public schools and state institutions of higher education to provide instruction on the influence of Christianity on history and culture. So, that is a, currently a House Bill that is in committee and you can see the names of those individuals that are trying to get that, get that brought to, to session. Next, Senate Bill 19, regards to academic interventions at public schools and the establishment of mathematic improvement plans. This is a push in the House and the Senate, so I wouldn't be surprised if, if that Senate Bill does come to fruition. Next, I got Senate Bill 105, School Panic Alert. This enacts Alisa's Law to require public and chartered, non-public schools to implement a wearable panic alert system and to make an appropriation. So, I do believe that the school panic alert systems are, are beneficial and are a safety, a safety initiative and a, and a, and a security provision that is good. And when they say wearable, they're talking about these, these lanyards that, a lot of them are lanyards or on your badges that if you push in the event of a, in the event of emergency, there's a notification that goes to, you know, of different entities. The concern has always been how are districts going to pay for these because some of them are up to $150,000, especially depending on the size of your, of your, of your district. We did do some, some research on our own and we, we found, we found some systems, you know, for roughly about $80,000. And of course, the way capitalism works, you know, these are in high demand, so they, you know, they can, they can kind of, you know, ask their own price. But that is a bill that's in Finance Committee. Just a couple more. Senate Bill 107, Senator Brenner, to require state and school district board members to appear on a ballot with a party designation. This is, again, this is something that has come to the Senate and it is still in, still in committee, still in discussion. Not a lot of thunder behind that one because school boards are supposed to be nonpartisan, but for some reason, there are a couple people in Columbus that are trying to push, push that. And Brenner is also a proponent of Senate Bill 113, a bill to provide diversity, to prohibit, excuse me, not provide, to prohibit any type of diversity, equity, and inclusion in public schools. Again, another bill that is in, in committee hearing. And then last, Senate Bill 276 is a, a bill that I do believe is, is beneficial to, to school districts. It is a, it is an attempt to ratify the Interstate Compact for School Psychologists. So, what that means is that school psychologists across different states will not have to come to Ohio and get Ohio license or certification because of such of a lack- come to Ohio and get Ohio license or certification because of such of a lack of school psychologists in the, uh, in the employment field. So, this is a, uh, this is a bill that's being pushed to, to try to get, you know, get that, that passed, so they don't have to go through all, school psychologists don't have to go through the litany of hoops to, to get licensed in Ohio. So, that's the summary and you can spend some time reading through some of those. And again, the majority of those are either in hearing, committee, uh, have not made it to the floor. One thing I do have on the last couple of pages, first is a invitation for the fall legislative briefing and lunch. Jill and I will be attending this on Monday at eleven o'clock down at the ESC, uh, and this is a opportunity for superintendents and treasurers and a board member or two, if you would like, to attend this session, to sit down with local legislators and just kinda talk through some of the, some of the current issues that are, that are going on in, um, in the State House and that affect public schools. I put this invitation here because I'm opening it up to see if one or two of you would be interested in going and if not, Jill and I will come back with a, with an update. But if, if one of, one or two of you do have any time on Monday, just let me know and I can RSVP for you.
What time is it?
It starts at eleven at the ESC. And then, uh, the last update with regards to the, uh, the legislature, legislative update, I've provided the, a flyer that public districts across the state of Ohio are starting to push out. We will also push this out via our social media and our other communication platforms. It is a, um, it is initiative called Choose Public Schools and through Choose Public Schools, one of the focus points, of course, is getting constituents to understand how public schools are funded in the state of Ohio. And one, um, one really interesting portion of this, of this initiative is how it talks about schools in Ohio, schools in Ohio are doing more with less, I think, uh, in the surrounding states compared to Michigan, uh, Indiana, Kentucky. Um, I think Ohio was trailing each of those states by about thirty-five hundred dollars per pupil. Uh, we're sitting around, like around seventy-seven, seventy-eight hundred per pupil in, um, the other states. I think Michigan was the highest where they were around like twelve-five that they were, uh, that they were providing per pupil. And there's a lot more information that's gonna be coming out, but this is just a, a copy of that flyer that is gonna go out across, you know, across a lot of different platforms. And it also, you know, denotes that Ohio is now the, is forty-fifth in the nation for state funding public schools. So, uh, we're five from the bottom as far as how states fund, um, fund public schools. So, a lot of information with regards to policies, a lot of information about property taxes, about school funding, but, um, I wanted to provide this update, uh, so you have it. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. I know it's, it's a lot of information, but I wanted to make sure that, that I shared. Any questions on, on that one? All right. The next item I have, uh, for discussion this evening is, I wanted to share with the board a copy of the extension of the IGS nat- natural gas contract through the Educational Purchasing Consortium. I just wanted to just update the board that we have, over the last several years, worked with the EPC to hedge, which means in a sense to lock in a natural gas rate over, uh, a certain amount of years. The EPC uses the purchasing power of over a hundred school districts and through, uh, that purchasing power, we've been allowed to lock in these rates. Now, as we all know, uh, we have all been informed that gas rates are going up, so the EPC has negotiated with IGS to lock in the hedge for one additional year for the contract that we have. So, I have, um, just letting you guys know that through December twenty twenty-seven, we are going to continue with the additional hedge rate that we have. And, uh, the first page, excuse me, the second page, well, the first page gives you just a summary of what's going on with natural gas. And the second page just kinda, kind of shows you where those hedges have been over the last several years. And, uh, you're talking about in twenty-eight, twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-two, two dollars and seventy-three, two dollars, excuse me, seventy-three cents for CCF, which is, uh, CCF is about what it costs gas to heat a hundred cubic feet. And we're all the way in, in the four dollar range now. And what the, the hedge group in the CC, in the, um, EPC allows us to do is work to target a price of about four dollars for, um, for CCF for the, uh, for the, for the remainder of the contract period. So, jumping in with EPC, jumping in with all these other school, school, school districts, we're gonna, we're gonna sign the hedge and just extend that contract over a year. And although it's not two dollars and eighty cents, four dollars is, is a lot better than what some of the going rates are and you can see it's four dollars and twenty-five cents, four dollars and fifty cents, and, and we're trying to lock in, uh, about four dollars for that additional, that additional year. And that is all I have this evening and, yes, that's all I have. Next is Ms. Adams.
Okay, um, then the next item is, um, is mine to talk to you about. And in the back of your folder, you have a copy of this letter from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce.
Back in the black folder, right?
In the black folder, yes. In the black folder. And it, um, so it has Ohio in the top corner, top left corner. So, um, we knew when we looked at our forecast that in fiscal year twenty-eight, we saw a deficit in the forecast, meaning, um, not only were we spending in a deficit, we would be out of money. And so, we also knew that would trigger the Department of Education and Workforce, um, to let us know that we had some work to do. And so this letter is our official communication from them. And it's a notification of potential deficit and written plan that is due back to them by December twenty-first. And, um, basically, we're, if we're not in, you hear the terms fiscal caution, fiscal watch, fiscal warning. We are not in, we are not labeled that. We don't have a label like that. Um, we have a consultant named Dorothy at the department who we've met with twice now. I've talked with her on the phone once. I think she'll be very helpful to us. Um, but she, you know, we clarified that with her today, that we can say we're in a fiscal precautionary status, which is just them working with us to prevent us from getting to the fiscal caution state. Uh, we would be in a fiscal caution state if the current, if our, if next year, the very next year, we had a deficit and we have that, we have a year buffer. Um, so basically, this letter outlines the process that we'll need to go through. Um, we, like I said, we met with Dor- Dorothy and so far, the work that we've done with her, we have a spreadsheet that has eight different tabs. We've had to enter information about our forecast, re-enter all of the data from the forecast, and then we will need to go through, um, a plan of any reductions that we can make. The, really, the ways to get out of this would be, um, to reduce our expenditures or to increase our revenue or a combination of both. Somehow, we need to make, make that deficit equal out. Um, and so, we've, we've done the, the easy part, which is to fill in the basics of the spreadsheet. We've answered the questions, we've put the nu- the current numbers that we submitted in. And so now, the, the real work begins, um, of making those, having those discussions about our expenditures and about our revenue. And so, um, we will be meeting with her really almost weekly between now and the end of December. The, the plan that ends up in that spreadsheet, um, does have to be approved by the board, by you, before we can submit it to the state by this December twenty-first deadline. Um, we also have to submit a written plan, uh, like a narrative that goes with it, just like we do with the forecast, explaining the changes that we plan to make. And it, it is very specific, you know, each time we talk to her, we're, we're getting more clarity, um, so that they can say, you know, we know exactly what we need to do to solve this problem. And then they can check in with us at the end of the year and, you know, if, if our financial numbers look good, they'll say, great, you carried out your plan, you solved the problem. Or they'll say, wait a minute, this is the plan that you submitted to us, what happened between now and then? And, you know, just like with the regular financial forecast, that's, that's a snapshot of, of place and time. So we can, we, we're gonna come up with the best plan we can, but there are always things that could happen that throw us off. We could have a roof collapse, we could have something else happen. So, we're, we're definitely going to be working on this. Um, and you will hear something about this every meeting between now and the end of December since we, we need your approval of that. Uh, we do have a board meeting December eighteenth, so our goal would be to have this approved so that we can send it in after that meeting, just so you kind of have the time, the timeframe there. Um, and this, this letter goes through on the second page before they sign it, just all of the things that the plan must have to be acceptable. And so each time we meet with Dorothy, we have to send her any progress, at least the day before, so she can review it and give us feedback and then help us through whatever the next steps would be. So, um, so far, we've found that support to be supportive. It, you know, sometimes when they say the state's helping you out, it feels threatening in some way. I think, I think she'll be very supportive to us. Um, we looked her up, she's a former, former school treasurer, so she definitely has experience. She's not somebody that just started working for the state and is trying to tell us something that she doesn't have experience doing, so that, that feels good. Um, but I just, you know, wanted to make sure, though this letter was sent to Mr. Howard, myself, and Mrs. Cherry, but it's important that the entire board knows where we are and will keep you informed about the process each week as we're going through it. So, that's just for, for information, um, as a, as a discussion item tonight, so.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, I know you're gonna update the entire board each time, in each meeting, are you gonna update the finance committee after the calls that you have with the state of Ohio? Cause you're having calls every week, correct? So should the, is the finance committee gonna be updated on those calls?
We, we can do that if you would like.
And also, I know you said, Jill, that we will get, um, a copy of what you're gonna turn in on December eighteen?
You'll, you'll have that before then for a review, yes. Because those, those, those things would be, um, anything that's in that plan would, would likely be something the board would have to act on. And so we would have to make sure it's something that you would be agreeable to acting on before we ask you to approve it. So absolutely, you'll be hearing, um, you'll be hearing about those things.
And, and I think, you know, uh, for, for all transparency, it's important to, uh, to understand that, you know, we, we're in a position now where we can address, you know, some of the things that, um, that we knew were impending. Uh, and, you know, there, there's gonna be, you know, some, some conversations that we have amongst ourselves with you guys. You know, we're gonna do everything we can to, you know, keep things and reductions away from kids, but, um, you know, there're gonna be some, some conversations that we have, you know, in the next couple of, uh, next couple of weeks that, that, um, you know, that are gonna be difficult, you know, just to say the least. But we, you know, this is something that we have to do because if we don't do it, somebody's gonna come in here and tell us what to do, in a sense, you know? Would you agree?
Mm-hmm.
Sounds...
I do, yeah.
So I'm sure, um, you know, as you, as you read this and think about things, you may have more questions. And, um, I can certainly update the finance committee after our calls, just with a summary of, of how that went. And then, um, if anyone has specific questions about, about this document or the process, I would be happy to answer them or get an answer if I don't know the answer, so. Are there any other questions tonight about this? Yeah, you'll, you'll definitely have an awareness of every single thing that is in that plan before we would ask you to take action on that.
I'll email my question.
Okay.
I have a few that I'll email. Any questions for, or any more questions? Next up is the superintendent comments.
Thank you, skipped my comments.
Yeah. Yeah, she was, that was, yeah, that was a discussion item.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
I, I need the chance to say some more exciting things over here. Some good news. I, I wanted to start by saying congratulations, uh, to Mrs. Cherry and Ms. Corrington on the election results and being returned to your seats at the Board of Education, so, uh, we're, um, it's great to get to keep working with you, so congratulations. And just a reminder to the Board of the OSBA Conference, November sixteenth through eighteenth. Right now, um, we, we believe that everybody is coming. If for some reason your plans would change, just let us know and we can make changes on our end. Um, and then the last thing I have as part of our audit, which we are almost finished with, they, they're still, they emailed today with a couple of things that they still need from us. Um, one of those things is this document that I sent you early, either earlier in the week or last week. And, um, this is for all elected and appointed officials and it just is, is as part of our audit, um, you need to, to sign and return this to me and we scan it and send it back to the auditors. So, if you could, um, you already had it to review, if you could sign it and give it back to me before you leave tonight, that would be appreciated. And that's all I have, thank you.
Well, the, okay, yeah. The first, um, first, uh, comment I have is, I, I want to acknowledge Mrs. Adams. She is so humble and, uh, you know, in, in the work that she does. But last night, she was awarded the Virginia Kettering Award.
Yes.
Uh, by Muse Machine and the Virginia Kettering Award is a award that is given to, uh, school administrators that, uh, show a commitment to supporting the arts. Can you, can you give us a little more detail about that?
I, I can a little bit. Um, it is, like you said, a, an award given to school administrators who support the arts and help to remove barriers for students to have exposure to the arts. And, um, I think I was nominated for that award because I, I've helped to organize using some of the grant funds that we have Title IV, specifically that, that we're really hoping we continue to get to do the full residencies in the elementary schools and then also, um, we use that to support student memberships and in-school presentations in the middle school and the high school. Since we do have to give some of our Title IV funding to Mother Brunner, we expanded the offering to Mother Brunner as well, so that the Trotwood kids who go to Mother Brunner can have that experience as well. Um, and so, that's how that came to be, I think.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, if you, uh, make reference to the, um, the packaging folders, identify this comments, just got a few things to run, run through to keep you guys updated. First, uh, tomorrow night, we will be hosting a OH SSA playoff game. We will be on, um, Spectrum One. The, the game will be televised on Spectrum One. This is just a summary of all of the things that are going on with the, um, with the game and then, uh, the information with regards to what time the game starts kickoff and just some of the things that are going on. So this is, tomorrow night, we are playing Lima Senior in the regional quarterfinal or something. We made it to the regional quarterfinals cause we had a bye. So, um, that's that. Next is a agenda for the Chamber of Commerce Business Recognition Annual Dinner. I believe Ms. Simmons is, is gonna be attending. I will be attending. I have asked them to put us on the agenda, Ms. Sim- Simmons, between six-thirty and six-forty-two. And, uh, you and I can just get up and, and say a few words with regards to just what's going on in the school districts, just a, just an update. And then we will be able to, you know, I, I don't know if you're gonna stay, but I'll head out to the game by seven. The mayor already has said move me up because she wants to, she wants to be at the game by kickoff as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, um, this is just the, uh, the event, so I will be, uh, will, will be dressed hopefully for no rain, but, you know, we'll, we'll make our way over there to the event and then we'll head, I'll, I'll head over to the game and then, uh, if Ms. Simmons is coming to the game as well, then we'll head out after, maybe. If not, she can represent us. Maybe. If not, she can represent us. All right. Next is a reminder about the Military Ball on Saturday. I know one or two of you may be attending that. Okay, and it's Saturday at Meadowbrook Country Club. And I will see some of you there. A couple of activities going on in the district. Breakfast with veterans at Westbrook Village. This is the 11th at, no, excuse me, this is the Early Learning Center. 8 to 9 o'clock on the 11th. So, if you have an opportunity, if you're available, stick your head in. Jill and I will be down at, well, we'll be able to make this one. The one at Westbrook, we won't be able to make. But, this is the same day as, I won't be able to make it. This is the same day as the superintendent's meeting at the ESC. So, I won't be able to make that, but I wanted to make sure I shared that with you. Then, at Westbrook, they are having a Veterans Day program at 10:00 at Westbrook. And then, it just is a summary and an agenda for their Veterans Day program. So, both of those programs will be taking place at the 11th, I mean, excuse me, on the 11th. Reminder about the High School Motown Review on November 13th. Starts at 6:00 PM. And if you're able to attend, I won't be in that. I may be able to attend this one because I'll be down at the Schuster Center for the WIZ, which some of our kids will be attending down there. And I'll talk about that in a minute as well. I was asked to share this with the board. The All Club, the Goodwill Easter Series All Club, has invited any one of you to their Friendsgiving on the 13th from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Mr. Glover, the director or rep at the Goodwill Building, wanted to invite anybody who was able to attend. And if you are, just let me know and I can RSVP for you. And what this is, is their All Club is their group for kids, I think 15 through 20. Some of them are students that have dropped out or are looking for alternative paths to high school diplomas. And they have an annual Thanksgiving dinner that they invite community people to. And Mr. Glover wanted to make sure we had that, had the opportunity to attend and have representation. So, if anybody is able to attend that, just let me know. So, on the 14th, we will have a group of students, middle school students, going to the WIZ. This is a Muse Machine event. And this event has been themed as Dinner in a Show. So, what's gonna happen, from my understanding, is they're going to start at the building at 5:00. And they're gonna have dinner. And they're gonna ask the kids to bring an individual with them, a parent, guardian, brother, sister. And they're gonna have dinner. They're gonna ask the kids to dress appropriately. And then, they're going to leave after dinner. And they're gonna head down to the Schuster Center for WIZ. Now, working through Muse Machine and working through Dayton Live, we were able to acquire 50 free tickets to the WIZ.
Nice.
So, we are working to try to, along with these kids, to also get students down on the 13th to see the WIZ. And those will be provided to high school and Westbrook students. So, we're working on, working on that to get those kids down on the 13th. So, the 14th is for our middle school kids. It's either the 12th or the 13th. It's for our high school and Westbrook students. And we're gonna utilize those 50 free tickets. And that was just us making a phone call to the Schuster Center, Dayton Live. And they said, "We'd love to get," they just said, "We'd love to get some of your kids down here. Let us work on it." And they called us back and they said, "Yeah, the WIZ is gonna provide 50 free tickets to this event." Okay. Yes, it starts on Tuesday. Tuesday through Sunday, I think. Tuesday or Thursday, Wednesday through Sunday. Well, I think starting, well, that's next week. Starting next week, they have a couple of different programs leading up to the performances. But, I don't know what they had going on today. Next is Family Steam Night at Trotwood Middle School on the 19th from 5:00 to 6:30. Science activities and experiments, hamburgers, hot dogs will be provided. That was shared by Mr. Gibson. The annual Family Thanksgiving Turkey Giveaway. We've done this for the last several years over at the main campus on the 26th. This event is sponsored by Miami Valley Meals. And if you have been around the last few years, you're familiar with this event. Cars are lined up starting around 8:00, all the way to Broadway Park. And they do this on a first-come, first-served basis. They give, I think, sometimes they give half turkeys, turkey breasts, all sides and anything that they can put together. And it's a whole meal that they provide to families here in our community. This will go out on Parent Square starting next week and then, a couple of times next week and then, a couple of times leading up to the actual event. And that concludes all of my information. I think we had enough comments after Mrs. Adams' information. So, we're gonna keep it upbeat and keep it positive.
Well, that's good. Thank you. Next up, the board comments. Mrs. Carrington?
Go Rams!
Okay. Mrs. Kilgore?
That was easy this time. Thank you for all the updates. Very informative, Mr. Howard and Mrs. Adams. And congratulations, Mrs. Cherry and Ms. Carrington, for your, on your election results. It was kind of neat watching you guys on the screen. Also, best wishes tomorrow to varsity football team. Go Rams!
Mr. Lumpkin?
Congratulations, Ms. Adams, on the award that you won. And I'd like to encourage the community to actually come out and support our varsity football team. The state playoffs are very important things. So, if you don't have anything going on, even if you do, come out and support our student athletes. It's gonna be cold. Wear a coat. It might rain. Get a slicker. This is Ohio football weather, so come out and support. And then, just families, just a reminder that there are resources available too. You know, there's a lot of things going on to shut down. Some people have had some things cut off to them, but there are different places around the city that have resources. So, just make sure you take it home as well.
Vice President, Mrs. Simmons?
I will join in on what my colleagues have said. Congratulations both, both, Mrs. Cherry and Mrs. Carrington, on being elected to continue to be on this squad. I think we're working well together and we need you both to stay right here, right with us. So, let's continue. The Trotwood Madison High School Art Club, they're in a competition. I don't know how many of you have seen it, but it's the Crossley Custom Cruiser Contest. And you have to go online and actually vote for it. So, it takes less than two seconds to go online and vote for Trotwood Madison Schools. Yes, I have voted and I will vote again. You can vote every day. So, it's with kids all across, I don't know if it's across the country or across the state, but it's kind of a big deal. So, I like to support all aspects of our students. So, this is one way that you can do it. It's crossliradio.com backslash cruiser contest. Takes less than two seconds. We are in Region Four. You can go in and select Trotwood Madison Schools. So, go in and place your vote today for our students. As Erin said, there are several resources throughout the community that have stepped up and helped out. And I would just like to recognize New York Pizzeria. They are giving away personal pan pizzas to kids. Starting, I think it starts this week, but then, over the weekend, they will do either hot dogs or hamburgers and a fry. And I thought that was real community. So, let's support that restaurant when we can and however we can because for a small business to step up in these trying times, that says that she's committed. So, let's support her in the same way. Let's Go Rams tomorrow. I will be attending the dinner since most of you guys will be going to the football game. So, I will stay back and be our representative for that, but Let's Go Rams!
And also, we just got notification that the Subway in front of Lowe's is also putting together, I think, six-inch subs for kids. And if they come in, I'll get all the information to make sure that I send it out. They come in with some type of student verification. They'll get free six-inch subs for the next few days.
I love it. That's community.
There are a lot of people that are really stepping up, trying to support.
That is community.
Support our community.
Nice. That's community.
Sorry about that, Ms. Cherry.
Thank you.
Was that all this?
Mm-hmm.
That's it. All right, well, last. But, congrats to you, Mrs. Adams. I also wanted to say congratulations to the students who received scholarships from the Central State Preview. Congratulations to you all. And hats off to Mrs. Howard because she was in attendance. We had a nice representation, so we appreciate that. Also, just wanna say thank you to the pizzeria and the Subway for, like Mrs. Simmons said, being community. And I also wanted to just thank Mrs. Marte for the soft opening that we went to on last Wednesday. That's community as well. It was very nice, very well attended. And support her as well. And Go Rams!
So, now, we are at item number 10 on the agenda, which is Executive Session. So, I need a motion to enter into Executive Session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official for the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual per B.O.E. policy 0166 and ORC 121.22G1. Action may be taken.
I'll motion.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Mrs. Adams, would you call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes. We will enter into Executive Section at 6:32.
What'd you say?
You're not worried about?
Did you get the J?
You said you are. No, I said I hope.
Can you fit your coat here? Can you fit your coat? Try it on. They said it's pretty. Can you take it back in?
Okay.
Whatever size you told.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
You know what? I forgot to thank Mr. Jones for the, oh, yes, yes, yes.
We'll do it on the next one.
Oh, yeah.